Two thirty.
Two thirty.
I thought I'd wear shorts and tennies.
Absolutely. If I can get home to do that, well, if I can get home to do that.
Yeah.
I don't know, Hector.
Good morning. It is nine o'clock, September seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. I would like to call the city council meeting to order. Please let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are present. And I'd like to announce that tonight you're all invited back at five oh one P. M. for our budget hearing. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
This invocation today is adapted from a prayer by the Reverend Billy Graham. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to ask your forgiveness and to seek your direction and guidance. Your word says, woe to those who call evil good, but we have done that. We have lost our spiritual equilibrium and reversed our values. We have rewarded laziness and called it welfare. We have neglected to discipline our children and called it building of self-esteem. We have abused power and called it politics. We have converted our neighbors' possessions and called it ambition. We have polluted the air with provanity and pornography and called it freedom of expression. We have discarded the values of our forefathers and called it enlightenment. Know our hearts today and cleanse us from every sin. Amen.
Amen.
I quite believe in the spirit of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
This morning, we just have one proclamation, the presentation that was previously on the agenda's move to new business. So first, we have American Business Women's Day. Council member Devine.
Thank you. My pleasure. Proclamation of the City of Punta Gorda, whereas the American Business Women's Association has been built, building a tradition based on its continuing efforts to promote educational and professional advancement of women. And whereas a United States Senate and House joint resolution recognizing September twenty second as American Business Women's Day was passed in nineteen eighty-three, a proclamation by President Reagan followed that same year. And whereas this special day gives all Americans an opportunity to recognize the contributions made by working women in such areas as historical heritage, civic accomplishments, cultural and intellectual achievement, betterment of the business world and communities, and in the development of an informed and responsible citizenry. And whereas September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen marks the sixty-fifth anniversary of American Business Women's Association. Now therefore, the city council of the City of Punta Gorda does hereby proclaim that September twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen shall be known as American Business Women's Day. In the City of Punta Gorda, in salute to more than forty thousand A. B. W. A. members for their efforts toward opening doors of educational opportunity, passed and duly adopted this twenty-second day of September, two thousand and fourteen, City of Punta Gorda, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and accepting as Elaine Kern's president of the Punta Gorda chapter of the American Business Women's Association.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
And I like to see a lot of the faces I see in the audience at our next meeting, which is on the twenty-fourth of this month. We're at Hurricane Charlie's, and it starts at six o'clock. And it's a wonderful organization for women. I joined right after I moved to Florida in two thousand and eleven. And through the association, I have met so many people and has helped my business greatly. And I think all women should try to attend meets once a month on the fourth Wednesday of every month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have introduction of board committee member nominees. If your name is submitted for a city board or committee and you would like to take a couple of minutes to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none. We will move into our public hearing agenda. And first, we have an ordinance first reading.
This is Z. A. dash zero three dash fourteen, the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-six, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article ten, Parking and Loading, Section ten point three, Parking Specifications, by deleting subsection J. in its entirety, adding a new section, ten point thirteen, Bicycle Parking Specifications, to provide for required bicycle parking facilities, amending Article seven, Architectural Provisions, Section seven point four, Building Principles, subsection E., Highway Commercial Building Principles, subsection fourteen, Design Treatments, by adding a, an option to integrate appropriately designed, short-term bicycle parking as a design treatment, providing for conflict and severability, and providing effective date.
Thank you. Urban Design Department? This is your baby. You better turn it up here.
Bicycle guy?
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design Bicycle Pedestrian Coordinator for the City of Punta Gorda. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any of the, the bicycle parking has been vetted by the, the Land Development Advisory Committee. The Planning Commission has gone through the discussion process several times. We've sent it out for comment to the Builders Association and developers, and the draft, the proposed ordinances, the result of all of that discussion and input. And we feel that this product is a meaningful addition to our efforts to become a bicycle-friendly community, which is the stated policy goal of the City of Punta Gorda.
So this is only for new developments, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions for Mitchell?
No. I particularly like the fact that it was vetted by other groups so that it's, it's not just us putting something together.
Carolyn?
I think it's a wonderfully detailed effort, and thank you for that. My only question was on section ten point one three on, I don't see a page number, but it's under B., in which identify that the parking spaces shall be determined on a case-by-case basis by the city manager or his designee based on the following criteria. And my only concern would be that, would it be perceived as kind of an arbitrary decision by staff to determine, you know? And I know you, we want to leave it more open and more flexible, but should we have any guidelines? I don't know. Maybe we don't need them.
I'll respond to that. Had, had paragraph B. ended without the inclusion of the criteria, the ordinance would be susceptible to a challenge of providing unbridled discretion to the city manager. But as the city council would adopt the four criteria provided there, I think it, it would be sufficiently directive to the city council, to the city manager to avoid that type of a challenge.
Howard?
From a policy standpoint, you need to decide. Last time we brought this to you a while ago, we had numbers. We do not now. It's now flexible, and each case to be evaluated based on the size of the development and configuration. That was what we thought that people wanted. They didn't want a number. Now, I don't even know if you could put a range in because we don't know the size of the developments.
Tom?
This is, from what I recall, is pretty much in sync of what we spoke about the last time we, we had this conversation. And the fact that we left it open, you know, maybe a good idea if a developer wants to come in and build an eighty and older development, maybe he shouldn't be subjected to putting in so many bicycle racks over. The fact that it's open, there, there is some flexibility there, and I think it's a good proposal.
I'm okay with the flexibility, and I also like the fee and lieu, which would cover, wouldn't cover the decorative bike rack that we selected for the fitness zone, but it would cover the post and loop, I believe, which, you know, some developers may opt to do that, which is beneficial for the city as well because then we would have more control over where the, the bike stands would go. So I think it's a good option. Any other questions before we open?
I've got one more. On page, on the first page of the ordinance, it says, on the third paragraph, the third line, it says, current taxpayers. Is there, that there's no direct cost to the current taxpayers? So is, is the word current, do we really need that in there? Isn't this intended to be that there's no direct cost to the taxpayers? Is there any?
I, I agree. I don't think that's a necessary modifier of the word taxpayers.
So do we want to remove it?
Are there going to be any future costs?
That's what I wondered.
Um, not any future direct cost to taxpayers.
I have no problem striking that word. I don't think it affects the meaning of the sentence.
Okay. I mean, there, there could be some future costs of, for bicycle parking that, that we as a community decide we need based, that's more public use bicycle parking, that would not really have an impact on, pertain to this ordinance, so.
Let's open the public hearing, and then when the motion is made, we can change the language or whatever the pleasure of the board is. This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on Z. A. zero three dash fourteen, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Z. A. zero three dash fourteen. Z. A. zero three dash fourteen. Anybody like to speak? Last call.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So now we need a motion.
Move to approve ordinance, Z. A. zero three fourteen, striking the word current. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve with a language change. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have Z. A. zero four dash fourteen.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-six, Land Development Regulations, Punta Gorda Code, by adopting Article three, Regulating Districts, Punta Gorda Code, aiding mobile food dispensing vehicles as a new use permitted by special exception with conditions on developed property in Section three point eight F., N. C. Neighborhood Commercial District, Section three point ten F., H. C. Highway Commercial District, Section three point eleven F., S. P. Special Purpose District, and Section three point seventeen M. O. Medical Overlay District, amending Chapter twenty-six, Article three, Sections three point eight F., three point eleven F., and three point seventeen F., Punta Gorda Code, to require special exceptions to be subject to applicable provisions of Chapter twenty-six, Article four, uses permitted with conditions, Punta Gorda Code, amending Chapter twenty-six, Article four, uses permitted with conditions, Punta Gorda Code, adding a new section, four point four zero, conditions for mobile food dispensing vehicles, to regulate mobile food dispensing vehicles, providing definitions authorizing mobile food dispensing vehicles to operate within certain zoning districts within the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, by special exception approval, requiring a local business tax receipt for each mobile food dispensing vehicle, providing requirements for the issuance of mobile food dispensing vehicle business tax receipts, providing operating standards for mobile food dispensing vehicles, providing a prohibition, providing for enforcement, providing for the revocation of mobile food dispensing vehicle local business tax receipts, amending Chapter twenty-six, Article eight, Section eight point twelve, sales within public right-of-way, Punta Gorda Code, to include other public places and parks, amending Chapter twenty-six, Article eight, Punta Gorda Code, by amending a new sec, by adding a new section, eight point twenty-nine, outdoor sales prohibited, to prohibit all outdoor sales on private property not otherwise authorized by Chapter twenty-six, Punta Gorda Code, providing for penalties, providing severability, providing conflicts, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
And that's just the title. Now you can take a break.
Good morning. For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. This amendment to the code has been discussed with the various citizens groups. It's been before city council a couple of times, as well as obtained input from the Planning Commission. We looked at the way the event manual handle, and special events handles the mobile vendors, and didn't want to create an obstacle for those situations, but allow it in restricted areas of the city, not in the downtown area, along the highway commercial, and out by the hospital, and the special purpose districts, but only by special exception, which gives the opportunity to review the request. If there's any questions?
So would the, if somebody wanted to get a license and have a mobile vending, they would have to come apply for a special exception?
Yes.
And there is a fee associated with that?
Yes.
Okay. And so each one of them is going to be based on their special exception application, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's pretty stringent now compared to what we had before. Are there questions for Terry?
Just a, a, a couple, yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions. Alcohol is precluded from all these vehicles, is it?
Um, it's not common for a mobile vendor to have that included, but if the zoning district was appropriate for it, I would think it could be.
Well, it, it's, it's silent with respect to that. The vendor, see, we, some ordinances in other jurisdictions have lengthy regulations regulating much more than this ordinance does. The regulations that we're going to be relying upon are the ones that are adopted by the state of Florida and the licensing provisions of these, these units to begin with. I don't know whether alcoholic beverages are even per, permitted by mobile vending vehicles under state law. And we can certainly look at that. I don't know that we even thought about that as a, as a consideration. So if, if it's the wishes of the city council to ensure that those beverages are prohibited from these, and, and if it's not clear from state law that it's prohibited, we can amend the provisions of our ordinance to add that in between, between now and the next reading.
That, that would be my choice. I would, I have a problem with the potential use of these mobile vending machines selling alcohol. You just never know where it might wind up.
Okay.
Very good. I have a concern with that.
And yet, these are the mobile vending machines that's certain, at events, do have alcohol, beer distributing, et cetera.
If I'm not mistaken, even state law exempts the mobile vending vehicles from the requirement permits for special events. I know ours, I think this ordinance does that.
For special events, there are for-profit businesses that can apply for a catering license through the state, which will, would allow them to serve alcoholic beverages at, at locations other than their primary business. For many of the special events, you will have a not-for-profit that pulls the alcoholic beverage permit. It's a temporary permit. They can get three per calendar year. But outside of the catering license for an actual for-profit business, I'm, I'm not certain, not either. We would have to look into that a little bit.
I think I would like to know what the state law has to say before I make any determination on which way to go.
I would agree with you. I, I would like to not just overregulate if the state law already takes care of it.
Go ahead. We can look into that.
So should we just move forward with the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Any other questions before we open it? This is a public hearing on Z. A. zero four dash fourteen. Z. A. zero four dash fourteen. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Z. A. zero four dash fourteen, last call.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. So.
Do we move approval at this point, or?
What, what you can do is move approval. If I, if I come back and tell you that it's not prohibited under the state law, I, you might have the opportunity at that point to reopen the public hearing, to consider whether you want to amend or add to this ordinance that prohibition.
I, I still have a problem, even if it is allowed by state law. I, I think that I would like to have some further dialogue about it before we reconsider.
Well, then, the other action would simply be this. Direct us now, as a condition to the approval of the ordinance, to amend the ordinance, this ordinance, to prohibit the sale of, of alcoholic beverages, and that would be the end of it.
I, I would be okay. And these vending, these vendors are primarily going to be there for lunches, I would think. Is that what it's all about? And are they going to be in a medical center?
Did we specify hours? We did not. So we did not specify hours of operation. Only, we only limited the time on construction sites, I believe.
I mean, I think the point is well-taken, and now is the best time to address it. And we can, and we can address it by, by a council action to modify this ordinance, to include that prohibition. We'll modify it as such and come back for second reading and approval, and that should be sufficient.
No, I would be in favor.
I like, yeah, I think we should go ahead and approve it and come back, and we're going to have a second reading anyway.
So we need a motion either way, either to prohibit it now or approve it now and wait for the information to come about the state licensing.
So if it is prohibited by state, we're not going to?
No. I think, I, I guess the way that the discussion should be addressed is if there's a consensus among the council members that alcoholic beverages should be allowed if they're allowed or otherwise not prohibited by state law, then that would be one thing. If the consensus is that irrespective of what state law allows or disallows, you don't want to see these mobile vehicles serving alcoholic beverages, then approve the ordinance with the amendment that there be a prohibition against the service, service of alcoholic beverage, sale and service of alcoholic beverages.
I will make, I'd like to make a motion that, sorry, go ahead.
I can see instances where, I'm seeing you're trying to think of, what would be the instances where a mobile vendor would come to a particular site and might have wine or beer in a particular occasion, whatever, it's not a special event of the city, but, but a business has something, and they've invited some mobile vendor to come and, and provide beer and wine as well as whatever they were also serving. I mean, I could see situations like that. So it's like, you know, I, I don't know that we want to be so restrictive.
Kim?
Any business attorney will tell you not to provide alcohol at your, at your functions.
Well, and, and, you know, personally, I don't have much experience with, with these vendors because there are not that many in our area. But intuitively, although they're in the highly urbanized areas, these vehicles are intended to serve pedestrian traffic. And, and in doing the research for this ordinance and looking at other ordinances, those are, those are the, you know, the highly urbanized areas are the ones where these seem to be in most demand. In our area, I would suspect, particularly where we're going to be placing them, that it's more likely that the customers will be arriving by motor vehicle. And so I'm, I'm pretty certain that you might want to discourage the use of their customers getting alcoholic beverages and getting into a car, and that would create perhaps an additional liability that the city should not even open the door for.
I can, I can tell you that from experience, there's a possibility that one of these mobile vendors could pull up to a large construction site, and I can tell you that selling beer at ten o'clock in the morning or even at lunchtime is not a good thing.
That's true. Or at a hospital.
Or at a hospital. So I would make a motion to approve the ordinance with the prohibition of alcohol.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance with the prohibition on alcohol. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Three to two.
Three to two in favor of the amendment.
Yes. Now we're going to move into another first reading, Z. A. zero six dash fourteen.
Yes, this also is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter twenty-six, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article Roman Rule two, sign standards, section, excuse me, I guess that would be eleven, Article eleven, sign standard, Section eleven point three, permitted signs, adding subsection eleven point three S., Medical Campus Directory signs, to provide for adequate signage for medical campus properties, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. The council did discuss this at a prior meeting to allow for appropriate and reasonable signage for the hospital to direct patients to the, the appropriate services and locations because of the large geographic area basically that they cover. And so we have drafted it with that in mind, and if there's any questions, we would.
What did the committees, the committees recommend?
I'm not positive this one went to the L. D. R. committee. Planning Commission did support it.
There any comments at all?
No, they supported it, and a L. D. R. member told me, yes, we did discuss it there. I can't keep track.
Okay. All right. Questions? Yes, Carolyn?
I guess my concern is on Section eleven three eight, S. eight, in which indicate that the ground sign shall not exceed ten feet in height. And ten feet in height seems very high to me. I mean, people are arriving by car, and so at a car level, if you're looking at a sign here rather than that high, it just, it seems high to me. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
I actually had the same issue with the, with the ten feet.
The, some of the signs that are out in the area of the hospital are ten feet in height.
There you are.
It's a little bit deceiving when, because I went out and literally measured a lot of them, and some of them more along the East Marion Avenue corridor. Here we go.
To me, that's appropriate for our demographic, really, because first of all, we have one-way roads, so we have people confused by that. They need to be able to see where they're going in an effective manner, so I'm okay with that.
I am too. It sounds bigger than it is.
Well, particularly since they, really, the top banner is the, the name of the facility, and then you have the information in terms of directions.
After saying this, I'm okay with it too, and we don't want, we made them take down all their banners last time. We can't be open that openly.
Any other questions for Terry before we open the public hearing?
I, I just have one more.
Yes.
And basically, it's a, I think it's just grammatical under eleven dash three, permitted signs, S., number one, Medical Campus Directory and Ground Signs are signs or sign is, but the relationship there needs to be modified, the grammar, that's all.
So it would be, it says, signs, Medical Campus Directory and Ground Signs are signs that are permanently attached.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Just, just for the sake of the public, just reminding that this is providing for directional information only. All other signs are prohibited.
So, okay, go back to S. one then, Terry, when it says, which is permanently attached to the ground. Okay, so this would, this would meet that criteria. Because it says, which places the bottom of the sign less than one foot from the ground directly beneath the sign. So this would be compliant with that. Okay?
Yes.
All right. This is a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on Z. A. zero six dash fourteen, please come to the podium. Z. A. zero six dash fourteen, last call, Z. A. zero six dash fourteen.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Z. A. zero six dash fourteen. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Should I have said?
Should I have said?
With, with, with the, the...
With the grammatical change?
That's what I meant.
Noted, duly noted.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay, next, we move into quasi-judicial public hearings, and the first, we have V, variance V-06-14.
Yes, the next two hearings are quasi-judicial proceedings, so anyone who is going to be providing evidence and testimony with respect to either of those two hearings needs to rise and be sworn by the, by the clerk at this time.
Raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And when you come to the podium, please state your name and indicate that you have been sworn.
The first item is V-06-14, a request for a variance by Roger H. Miller III Esquire, Agent for John Russell O'Malley, property owner pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10, Puntagordo Code, to allow a new screen enclosure to be installed on an existing pool deck with a rear yard setback of 16.4 feet instead of 20 feet, as required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D, Puntagordo Code. The address is 415 Sorrento Court.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. Staff received this request for a variance due to a change in property ownership, and the construction of the property was in the 70s, at which time, you know, the setbacks actually were permitted at 15 feet. Had an enclosure been put on the swimming pool at that time, it would have been allowed to be maintained and remain in place. In this particular instance, that original property owner chose to not put it on. Since then, the code has been amended to require a 20-foot rear yard setback for pool patios, decks, and cages. And so, that, we could not approve a permit for the new property owner to actually put the enclosure on there. The property owner does need use of the pool due to a medical condition, and he has provided that from his physician. I do want to include on the record, we did receive one objection to the request. The address from the person objected is 440 Sorrento Court. The subject of property is 415 Sorrento Court, so they, they are not side by side. And they state they request that the variance V-06-14, to allow a screen enclosure with a 16-foot setback versus required 20-foot at 415 Sorrento Court be refused. The purpose of the 20-foot setback for screen enclosures is to preserve the view of adjacent properties. And so, I did just want to clarify that for the record.
And let me point out at this point that unless the objector is here to testify under oath, you can note the, the fact that, that an objection has been posed, but should not form any part of the basis of your decision.
Thank you.
Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding.
Thank you. And, and what did the committees recommend?
The Board of Zoning Appeals and City Staff do recommend approval of this requested variance. We do support the request. The building official has stated that the screen enclosure is a safer method of enclosing a swimming pool than a, just a fence.
And do we even allow raw chain-link fence?
Not anymore.
No, we do not.
And the property owner indicated he would like to take that down.
Okay. Any other questions for Terry before, anybody would like to speak on V-06-14, please come to the podium, state your name, and that you've been sworn, please?
Good morning, Roger Miller here on behalf of Far Far Emmerich Hackett &amp; Carr and Mr. O'Malley. I just wanted to echo some of what Ms. Tubbs said, but Mr. O'Malley is a federal district court judge in Kansas City, Missouri, and he had a spinal cord stroke some time ago, and the swimming pool is part of his physical therapy related to that. And when he comes in town, he doesn't live here full-time, there's apparently a roost of ducks and other waterfowl that have taken a liking to his swimming pool. So, when he gets here, it's sometimes inconvenient or undesirable to use the swimming pool. So, he would simply like to put a pool cage, which I think would make the property look more in line with the other properties in the neighborhood, and would get rid of that chain-link fence, and would allow him to make full use of the property. And again, as, as Ms. Tubbs noted, the only reason he can't do that is because the ordinance was changed after the, the pool deck was built. So, your consideration in this request is greatly appreciated, and he would have liked to be here, but he's on the immigration docket, and they are extremely busy these days. So, he, he thanks you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on V-06-14? Do I have to, do I have to open and close a public hearing or not? We can just take a motion now?
Close the public hearing.
Okay. So, anybody else to speak on V-06-14? Last call.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve V-06-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have another variance request, V-07-14.
Yes, this is a request for a variance by Roger H. Miller III Esquire, Agent for Kevin and Rachel Catigan, property owners pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10, Puntagordo Code, to allow an existing concrete slab with a rear yard setback of 16.1 feet instead of 20 feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D, Puntagordo Code, and to allow a rear yard setback of 24.7 feet for the existing house, which abuts a waterway instead of 25 feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.4G4. The property is located at 2080 Villa Seville, Puntagordo, Florida.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This also came to staff due to a change in hands of the property. In this particular instance, when the, when they did the survey of the property, they found that the back wall of the house was a 24.7, which could have been addressed through an administrative variance. However, there was also a concrete slab that was shown on the survey. As far as we know, the slab has been there since the house was constructed in 1997. It does have a non-conforming setback. Would have been non-conforming in 1997. I don't have any explanation for why it's there, but they are not proposing any additions, improvements, enclosures, or anything on it. It's just a clear title in this instance, and the Board of Zoning Appeals and City Staff do recommend approval.
Questions before we open? This is a public, Tom?
Yep. If they wanted to enclose this at some point in time, what would be the process?
They would need to get a variance to enclose it, then. Because as it is, the variance request was just to clear title. It's there. They aren't proposing anything on it, and...
Since the variance ultimately gets recorded, if the council does grant the variance, and if it's your pleasure to ensure that this would not be enclosed in the future by either this property owner or a future property owner, you might make that part of your motion.
Okay, if you'd like to speak on V-07-14, please come to the podium, state your name, and that you've been sworn. V-07-14.
Roger Miller again on behalf of the applicant. I have been sworn. I don't have really much to add to Ms. Tubbs, but we do appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, V-07-14.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I would move to approve V-07-14 with the provision that the, the concrete slab not be able to be enclosed in the future.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the variance with the conditions as stated by Councilmember Kavanaugh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Four to one. Okay, next, we have a resolution, next, we have citizens' comments on one item, which would be the resolution of the city with the county for the FEMA risk map study. If anybody would like to comment on that, please come to the podium, state your name. We have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the resolution of the city.
This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Puntagordo, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between the city and Charlotte County for FEMA risk map study project, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Our building official is here, Randy Cole, if you have any questions. At a joint meeting several months ago, we discussed the FEMA risk map study that's going on right now, and whether we needed a consultant to help us keep FEMA on their toes, answer any questions, so that our property owners are protected. The county went out for proposals, two were received. The committee, which our building official sat in on, or our representative, selected Wyler Engineering as the top-ranked firm. The county approved it. The contract has been negotiated. You have it in front of you. The city will, city's share of the estimated costs are about 19%. That's based on developed properties in the mapping area. And we have the total impact right now, we think it's around 38,200 over a five-year period. It could go up or down, depending on how much we want to use our consultant. Am I okay so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we feel we need to, we feel we need the assistance. Would you like to add to this?
No, it's just, it would be a voice in the room for us to make sure that the computer modeling is, all the data's entered in, there's no guesswork involved, just an oversight, not, don't anticipate being an adversarial position at all. It's, it's a cooperative position, is, I would like to see it go forward. It is on Charlotte County Commission's agenda for next Tuesday, the 23rd, for their final approval.
I think this, this is excellent work. Thank you for negotiating and making the formulation work out in, you know, favorable position for the city. Would, would you be participating in this ongoing, and would the city be getting any feedback or anything like that?
Yes, I'll be participating continuously in it, as will a representative from the county. And the scope of work calls for a minimum of two presentations, the council and commission updates per year.
Nice.
More if necessary, but a minimum of two.
Okay. Tom, and then Carolyn, and then we'll move down there.
I think it's a, it's a great proposal, and I'm, I fully support it, but I have a question on Article 5, 5.2. It says, "The consultant agrees that any software, computer systems, and database is used for providing the documents necessary to this agreement shall be compatible with existing county software and systems." Where does that leave the city vis-à-vis the county software versus the city software?
Our systems are compatible with the county.
That's fine, thank you.
Carolyn?
You had mentioned that they will be giving presentations, I didn't, to the city. I did not see that here. So, if that's the case, I'm really appreciative, because I think that's what we need, is we need the feedback as well as the commission.
You'll find it in the scope of work under public outreach.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy, and then Kim?
Yeah, I think it's a great thing as well, and knowing from our discussions how much money this would have cost us had we done this ourselves, that the cost could be anywhere from $200,000 to $500,000. I mean, so this is a great savings for the, for the city. When they do this analysis, will they, will you all then be ensuring that there are sufficient number of transects in this so that we get more accurate mapping?
Yes. I have a draft proposal of the number of transects that'll be done. I don't know how good it'll show.
Because I know Wyler Engineering is really good with this, with this kind of analysis.
The red lines are the proposed transects. Good study.
Looks good.
Kim?
That was, that was my question also, and I just want to thank you. I think this is so important for us to have this. It's, it's, we need to be involved in this. So, thank you for all your work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we need...
Just one question. Randy, what's the timeframe on, I guess it's years rather than?
It'll be years. It's kind of loose. It's going to depend, because FEMA doesn't actually do the work themselves, they contract out their side, too.
Right.
So, it's going to depend on how the deliverables come in for us to look at. Early anticipation was we might see some preliminary maps by late 2016. When the preliminary ones come out, then every municipality has a chance to look them over along with their consultants, if applicable, and then any challenges are heard, and then, of course, the adoption, and that could take another 18 to 24 months.
But I think this is so helpful for citizens as well, because during the, it's not just an unveiling of this map that, you know, we haven't had any kind of, somewhat of an input into. So, at least, you know, the citizens can be informed through the presentations that will be done at the commission and the city, so along the way, they're informed of what potential changes could be at the end.
Yes, and, and even whether some changes are favorable or not favorable, I think the important part is it adds stability to it, and we'll be living with these maps for decades. But they'll be stable, they'll be the best we can do. The maps we're using now are based on technology from the 70s, to give an example, it predates cell phones.
Rachel, I do have a question.
Tom?
Is there any criteria that will be ultimately used as the basis for sea level rise, or is, is that just going to be an ongoing discussion? I mean...
It's not anticipated to be included in this study. FEMA's not, at this point, considering sea level rise.
Kim?
We have this, the cost estimate at 38,2 over a five-year period. Does that five years start when our consultant starts working, like in 2016, or does that start now?
The five-year period is an anticipated period of time. It could be four years, it could be six.
Okay.
It could be three and a half.
But the trigger is when we get the maps from FEMA?
We want to go through, yeah, as, as, as each part of the data unfold, we'll review it, and as each model, computer model is run, they'll see that it's, the right data, proper data was put in the computer model, and computer models, just like you see the computer models, how they'll run six different ones for hurricane track.
Right.
We're doing the same thing here, basically, to make sure they all coincide with each other.
Nancy?
Yeah, I think the other thing that's important for our community to understand is that we're being proactive on this, and we're not sitting back and waiting until after we see what FEMA has, the results are, and then we have to go back and do this ourselves, and, and then try to submit to FEMA to get changes. So, it's, it's real time. That's a very, that's a very good thing.
When a community waits until the preliminary maps come out and it decides to mount its challenges, now you're in an adversarial position. And, and you have to ask, ask for access to their data then, and try to acquire it, and then you have your people review it to mount your challenge. This will just go along together down the road.
Good strategy. Excellent. We need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we move on to the consent agenda, and first, I'll ask if there's any items to be pulled before we move into citizens' comments.
I'd like to pull D1.
D1 is being pulled, which is the Lobby of Services to Capital Access. Anybody else?
Yes. I'd like to pull F1.
F1, the Cooperative Funding Application, will be pulled. Anything else? Okay, now...
Move approval of the remaining.
No, we got to have citizens' comments, sorry.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving into citizens' comments on consent agenda items. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Charlie Council Citizen. When I was going over this agenda over the weekend, particularly the, particularly the consent agenda items, Item E4 regarding the request for signage for this Bavarian bash came to mind. The reason it came to mind is for the last several days, I've been seeing a large event sign hung up on the public right-of-way at the corner of Monaco and 41, adjacent to the Walgreen Drugstore. I'm not recommending any particular action by the council, but I just thought I wanted to make the point, it seems to me a bit presumptuous from the standpoint of the event organizers to be here asking the council for permission to post signage where they've already gone ahead and put the signs up, and where the location of that sign is doesn't even seem to conform with the request that they put into Terry and her group. Thank you.
Thank you. This, this request is for two banners to go on the site at City Marketplace, so that's what is in the recommendation from staff. If, if it is approved, that's what would be approved. Okay, any other citizens' comments on consent agenda items? Okay.
Move approval of the remaining consent agenda items.
Remaining minus D1 and F1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, D1, Carolyn?
I'm very much in favor of the awarding the contract to Capital Access as outlined here. here. The thing that I did want to bring up, though, is that I know that we're thinking of having Jerry Paul and his staff join us to give us some direction and what have you. But what I would like to recommend is that we have a separate workshop, so that we can spend an hour, hour and a half, just focused on the issues that we're going to be dealing with, undoubtedly beyond the RO plant, and what our strategies are going to be, so that we're all very clear. And I think a separate workshop where we are just discussing, we don't have to worry about... I mean, obviously, everyone can be here, but we can at least just discuss with Jerry and his staff what our strategy is going to be.
I mean, I think it's... That's going to be during a council meeting. So, is the pleasure to have a separate meeting, or to consider it during the city council meeting? Nancy?
I'm not opposed to a separate meeting, if in fact it's going to drag out a council meeting, that it might be, have it a different day. It's very common practice.
Or even it could be in the afternoon after a council meeting. But I guess what I'm thinking is that it just allows then more participation from the audience, and I think we need to have that discussion.
See, I would think that we would get less participation from the public if we did it at a different time. But, oop, sorry, Charlie, your comments. Your comment time is expired. I'm lost timing it. You were good.
Well, typically, at a workshop meeting, the public doesn't really have a right or opportunity to participate unless the city council elects to include them in the discussion. Just so you know.
I'm okay with having it, just like we had the presentations from the lobbyist groups. I thought it went fine during a council meeting. I don't foresee this being any more lengthy or any more burdensome during a council meeting, but that's...
I think it probably would make the meeting longer, but I might recommend that we maybe
each meet with him separately to kind of discuss. That way, it might expedite the process at the meeting. So, I mean, I feel uneducated in using a lobbyist. I mean, what we did was great, but I actually got more information by the... When they made their presentations about actually what they can do and what they know, and so...
Tom?
I kind of agree with Carolyn on this. As a group, asking questions, I think we would all get educated as a group and learn more about the process. So, I have no problem with doing a workshop. I think it might be an interesting idea.
And I would have no problem involving the community, people who are interested. It's an opportunity to educate all of us, and as much as having separate meetings, I think, is a one-on-one is good. I get a lot out of the public discussion.
Right.
So...
So, we could basically, instead of calling it a workshop, we could just call it a special meeting and have public input?
You can have public input at a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would call it a workshop, and again, you may open it up to the public. I'm just letting you know that you don't have to, if you don't want to, for this or other workshops in the future. It's an opportunity for you to discuss something in the sunshine that you otherwise can't discuss, and in a more informal setting.
I think we need that.
I'm hearing consensus that...
I really do.
So, we'll have to...
About the afternoon of a council meeting?
That's fine.
Depends on how long of the council meetings are.
If you put too much on the agenda, Howard. I think that's fine.
I mean, at least we're... I mean, is that...
It's already a day that you have planned.
It's already a day that we've set aside, so yes.
Maybe McHale can... Well, we already know the 15th.
15th may go on.
May go on. We'll have to look at October 1st.
October 1st, or the 1st one in November.
I would like to do it earlier than later. I mean, everything that we understand about dealing with our legislators is to reach them early, and we need to know what our strategies are, where we're going to push the buttons, what role we're going to play in helping. Again, it's not... It's going to be on the backs of our lobbyists. It's going to be our participation as well. So, I would like to see it done earlier.
So, let's look at October 1st, and if that doesn't work, we'll look at an alternate date in October, because the 15th might not work out.
So, as we're discussing it, we'll have McHale email Jerry Paul and see if the afternoon of the 1st is working.
Sounds good.
You know, it doesn't have to be on a council day. It would just be...
It's... We're here.
Yeah, we're here.
Thank you.
You want us here all day, apparently.
Then I would like to move approval of D1, the consent agenda. Second.
So, we have a motion, second, to approve the award of the agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cared unanimously. So, now we're moving on to F1. Tom?
I would just like to get an explanation from Howard on the change in the funding, including the 15%, and where we stand with that. If you could explain to everybody about that.
When we submitted, as a city, the application for the RO project last year, we submitted $28 million, which has always been the estimate. It's a... We haven't even designed it. We don't even have bids, but that's our estimate from Tetra Tech. And when we went in front of SWIFTMUD, we said, "Look, if, when all is said and done, if the project comes in at $29 million or $30 million, we'll pay the extra." And if it comes in at 27 or 26, great. During our discussions with the water authority and the county regarding the pipeline interconnect and the RO project, we have discovered that the pipeline project includes a 15% contingency. We didn't know that, and SWIFTMUD has approved that project tentatively. We'll come up with some agreement. So, since our project of $28 million does not include a contingency, we're adding one. And included in our grant application is a 15% contingency, just like the pipeline interconnect has a 15% contingency. So, it's no longer a $28 million project. It's $28 million plus 15%. Now, again, that's our planning number. We don't really know yet what the final cost will be. So, we're recommending council approve a grant application to SWIFTMUD for cooperative funding for... That's the new total. The new total is $32,200,000, or 16,1. And because we're going to do the same thing that the authority, have a 15% contingency.
Right.
I'm not saying it's going to go anywhere this fiscal year, but let's put it in. Got to be in before October 1st.
I like it.
Right. So, the request that we currently have in for the $1.5 million for the wellfield testing, do we have an opportunity to increase that by 15% or is that...
Everything is a 15% contingency. Right now, in the budget, though, they have $1.5 million. We're not going to quibble over that when we're...
Just my point is, we have to demonstrate to our legislators that we are reaching out for every penny that we can possibly get for this project, because we're going to be going back to them all the time, asking them for additional funding. Later on, on the agenda, we're going to be talking about rate hikes to, for our utility payers. So, I just want us all to be aware that if there's any possibility of getting dollars, hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars, we should be out there working very diligently to get it. And the second thing I would like to say is, on previous agenda items, if the word "water" appeared anyplace in our agenda, somebody from SWIFTMUD was sitting out there in that audience. All of a sudden, they've disappeared. Can we find out why? I mean, we give them $1 million a year. They can't show up at our meeting every once in a while? Can we find out? Can you maybe... What do you want me to do? Invite them. Send them a formal invitation to appear at our meetings.
We can send them our agenda every two weeks. If they'd like to come, they can come.
Okay.
Kind of hard for us to demand that they...
We're not saying demand, but, you know, just...
Well, Tara, she's our... She's our...
Tara's on maternity leave.
She's on maternity leave.
Might have somebody else.
Right. She does fill in for her, yes.
She doesn't replace you.
Yep.
Do you miss them?
If we have questions for them, they should be here. I'm sure we all have questions that we'd like to ask them.
We'll send them the agenda.
One question I had on this application is, why aren't we checkmarking regional water supply planning as our project type? Because I truly believe that that is part of our project type.
We can check it. They said it wasn't, but we can check it.
Well, we say it is.
I know.
And so does the state of Florida.
We're filling out the application.
Okay.
And so does the state of Florida, I believe, right?
Yes.